Good evening. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, call roll please.
Fluharty?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Speeds?
Here.
Mizek?
Here.
Janutis?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Sandy Spinks by Janutis, second by Fluharty. Call roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, 2018. Any changes or corrections? None can have a motion for acceptance. By Rhodes, second by Mizek. Call roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, 2018. Any corrections to that? None. A motion for acceptance by Fluharty, second by Janutis. Call roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
And we do have a presentation tonight. Jumbo, my favorite thing to do. This is Buddy Poppy Day with the VFW. You guys want to step forward, please? It's our annual tradition.
Yes, sir.
And you have the poppies with you.
Yes, I have them.
Okay, I know. Whereas, the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas, May 1st through May 31st has been designated as Buddy Poppy Days. And whereas, the VFW seeks to preserve and strengthen comradeship among its members, to perpetuate the memory and history of deceased veterans, and to assist their widows and orphans, to maintain true allegiance to the government of the United States, and fidelity to its Constitution and laws, to foster true patriotism, and to preserve and defend the United States of America from all their enemies. And whereas, members of the VFW have worked tirelessly to assist worthy comrades who have done so much to keep our way of life intact, and whereas, the ladies auxiliary of the VFW has received 501(c)(3) status for the French Bartlett Auxiliary Fund, Inc., which will be used to grant scholarships for dependents of our local veterans, as well as to aid and comfort needing veterans and their dependents. Now therefore, I stand, Cochi, Mayor of the City of Bedford, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim, May 1st to 31st, 2018, Buddy Poppy Days. In the City of Bedford, and do hereby urge all citizens to join in the reaffirmation of our gratitude to the men and women who have served so faithfully, in defense of the freedoms we continue to enjoy, and support the VFW in its efforts by wearing a Buddy Poppy as a mute evidence of our gratitude. Congratulations for all the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you for every year for supporting us and, you know, looking to giving us donations and giving us goodies to give to the veterans. I want to extend my invitation to everyone again, for Memorial Day after the parade, we're having an open house at the VFW. We're also having some gentlemen and ladies come from the Lew Stokes Medical Center. They're coming for lunch, and a few of them are going to march in the parade also. It's not going to be as large as last year because they don't have the funding to bring as many people to town, so. All this money that you guys do donate, we do go back and have them come throughout the year, just to get out of the facility and come to our post and have dinner and sit and play dominoes and stuff like that. So I want to thank everybody for your, you know, your support, and I appreciate everything everybody does for our country and our veterans and our heroes. Thank you.
No, thank you guys for what you do. Now we all got to get our dollar on.
Yes, and I do have time here.
You have to start up front here.
Why don't you go on the car? I said it by my computer, and I'm sorry. He's left this time. He was there for a couple of weeks. He did such a nice job. Thank you. He emailed each other. I didn't picture us. It stays in there. She remembers. Like I always say, everybody, my favorite saying is, "We make that, owe them all, what we owe them all."
That's great.
It's my favorite saying.
It's a good saying.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
How are you?
It means a lot to have the veterans come from downtown out to a nice dinner with the guys and a cool refreshment.
Oops, there goes two. Thank you, everyone. I'll see you on Monday.
Yes, thank you. All right, under Old Business, Resolution Number 2523-18. A ordinance, as a resolution. A resolution approving and accepting the proposed 2018 tax budget for the year January 1st, 2019, and December 31st, 2019, and declaring on Monday. It's our wish to do that again on second reading. At 7:00, we had a public hearing for the budget, and now the second reading next week, next meeting will be the third final reading. I have a motion for second reading by Janutis, second by Fluharty. Call roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes. Reports, Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a handful of items here I'd like to go over. First, friendly reminder that Monday, we will have our annual Mahona Lake Parade, right down Center Road and Broadway, 10:15 start, so hopefully everybody can attend that. We are getting prepared to advertise over the next few weeks for our road program this year. That road program, with the plan is to have a bid opening in early June so we can get this project underway, and earlier we can get this out to bid, better prices that we can secure for the roadways. We are also, last week, we were notified by the county that they did release a CDB-G grant. That grant is due within one month, so what our plan is, is to expand on our existing road program and apply for the $150,000. We believe we can do at least two, possibly three more streets, and that'll be, you know, instead of $400,000 into our road program this year, we'll spend over, you know, $550, closer to $600,000. We can get as much as possible. So that's our plan. We will provide that, prepare for that grant, we'll get that submitted, and by the end of this week, early next week, we'll have a list of streets. Again, I talked to a resident this morning regarding a street in her, where she lived. We said, you know, we are going to, there's no rhyme or reason behind this, we are addressing the worst of the worst. We're not going to get caught up in one year. This is going to take a few years for us to get caught up. But again, we, we're, it's the worst of the worst. There are, believe it or not, some streets that we last resurfaced in 1989 and 1990. It's a long time. So, you know, if there, there is absolutely no rhyme or reason, we didn't look at, you know, we're just trying to tackle the worst and move on. So hopefully, over the next few years, we will get caught up. Our fire department's going to be flushing the hydrants throughout June, just an FYI, and we're also going to be going around town, as we did last year, went out and painted hydrants. We didn't get all of them done last year, but we are going to look for some summer help to continue to do that this year, hopefully get all of them painted. There are some that need to get replaced, we're aware of that. If you see some out there that cones by them, you know, our staff's aware, and we'll get those done as quickly as possible. I know grass was also a hot topic over the last week. You know, we've done, myself, our building department, we went around, we addressed the ones that received our friendly letters, those have been cut, you know, right away. The other ones, I will tell you that our clerical staff and a couple people worked most of Saturday, you know, sending notices out, we have to send those certified letters out. You know, typically, there's about a two-week window where it's catch-up time, and we're in the middle of that, so hopefully by the end of this week, we'll, you know, most of the residents will get those tagged, get those addressed. If not, we'll be out there to cut them, and they'll be charged. So we are, we are on that. Friendly reminder that we, we're going to have a watershed, Tinker's Creek Watershed meeting this Wednesday, it's open to the public. This is similar to, you know, we had the representative from Heritage Ohio, not Heritage Ohio, the Heritage Home Program, Cleveland Restoration Society out a few weeks back to talk about some programs that they offer. The watershed's going to talk about what their organization's about, they're going to talk about things, you know, possible rain barrel workshops and things of that, things of that nature. So, again, this is another organization we're part of, and, you know, it could be of interest to you to attend these meetings, and again, this one is this Wednesday. And lastly, I just want to touch on, talked about it a little bit during our tax hearing, as far as the US Bank announcement a couple weeks ago, you know, when that hit, you know, our local US Bank, the Mortgage Division, did notify us. Unfortunately, it's not the way, and we expressed to them, it's not the way that we're accustomed to do business. You know, every year for, I think, 10 years, Frank, or myself, or another staff member, would go there, extend our hand, offer them a $20,000 to $25,000 incentive check every year, very personable. That's how we do business. And when we get a certified letter, that's how we found out that they were closing. You know, contrary to what some of the discussions were, it is not a relocation. They made it very clear, it is a closure of that, what they refer to as a satellite location. So there's, again, it's 300 people in northeast Ohio that are out of work, they're not getting relocated. We did have some, for what it's worth, decent conversations with the representatives, the decision-makers of that decision. We spoke to them about it, spoke to, you know, our thought as far as not, you know, appreciating how it went down. And not only us, but I can tell you, you know, Greater Cleveland Partnership and the state of Ohio also received that letter, and were pretty shocked by it. They also reached out to the bank. Basically, how they put it to us was this, you know, they understand, it's a lot of jobs for a small town, it is. But the reality is, it's a satellite location for them. They have 70,000 employees across the country. And, you know, they entered into a lease, they, we experienced record low interest rates, federal government was giving tons of money to help people get out of underwater mortgages, their lease is up, the market does not justify keeping that satellite location open anymore. That's it. That's pretty much what they told us. It's not relocating, it just simply doesn't warrant them having that small, small site. It's a huge site for us, but in the scheme of things, that, that was their answer. They're very apologetic for how they responded, or how they notified us, and that was pretty much that, that conversation. You know, in turn, Frank and I and our staff, we've had some, some challenging conversations. We did sit down and tighten up our budget, we made some, you know, small cuts. We also are experiencing some savings that we weren't really anticipating this year, based on good decision-making by, by City Council. One of those savings is going to be coming from our dispatch center. By adding more cities in that center, our costs are actually going down. You know, we're going to save probably between $50,000 and $60,000 there. And we're making some other decisions, other purchases that we were planning to do, improvements that we're simply going to have to put off for right now. We made about two, $250,000 in cuts, and, you know, as I told the staff, it's, you know, two steps forward, one step back, but this is definitely, you know, nothing insurmountable, we just, we have our work cut out for us. So, that's kind of, kind of my word.
Thank you. Mr. Montal.
I have no report tonight, thank you, Mayor.
You? Mr. Dan Bozzi?
A couple items. I'd just like to thank the VFW for allowing us to hold our fire medic entry exam Saturday, and I appreciate that they allowed us to use their facilities and hall, and that worked out very well for us. Just a reminder, after Memorial Day, our first event on the square, after that, for festivals will be the Rib Fest with the Rotary on June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, so plan accordingly. And I do have some comments embarrassing tax budgets, so I can wait till we get to the assessment areas of the.
Okay. How do we want to do it?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay. Mr. Fluharty? Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report some, a couple decent things that's happened out in the area, in our ward, is that we now finally cleaned up the Bedford condo, Dale condos, and the Union Street Apartments ravine that we've been digging out for, are going at for a while. We pulled out, what'd they say, 60 tires out of that ravine? Along with a lot of other garbage, and are they done fine with that?
Yes.
Yes, good, because I've had a couple people over there tell me they were so glad to see that clear.
And we also, not to interrupt, we did meet with the owner of the Sunoco Station, and we identified, he actually had caught some individuals that have changed and thrown their tire over his, the back of his property, and he's going to work to address that. So, between the three of them, that's primarily, I think, where they're coming from.
Good, good, we got that taken care of. And also, I know Mike was talking about the grass cutting problems in this town, and it's, it's amazing to me, now that I'm in this position, I thought it was bad in my street, my goodness, I go through this whole town, and it's like, it's mind-boggling how bad the grass is not being taken care of in this town, and that's, it's a shame, is what it is. Believe me, these people are working, I've turned in probably 20, 25 homes, and Michelle, his secretary, has been doing a great job, and she's getting to it as fast as she's can. In fact, I got a call today, before I came here, a guy had called me, and right away knew who he was, and I tried to stop him, because I, all I've been getting is calls, and they go right into it, you know, it's like, I was just trying to stop him, and he goes, "No, I'm actually calling to thank you, they actually came out and cut that lot behind me." And I said, "Boy, this is a first," because I haven't had too many of those yet, so, you know, it was nice to hear a good thing for once, that it actually got done, and somebody was happy, and they appreciated, and they thanked me, and I'll thank Michelle when I see her again. But, you know, it's a shame we have to go do all this, but, you know, we got to do what we got to do, try to keep this silent town, you know, looking good and clean, and it's just a shame that we have to go spend a lot of time doing this, but that's it, in a report. Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
I welcome everybody here on a beautiful night. We haven't had too many beautiful weather days, so it's good to see such a good crowd here. The big thing, of course, which I always bring up, is Dominion. They started filling some of the holes in on Washington, but it looks like all they're doing is filling the holes in. Some of that, those holes have undermined Washington themselves, and it doesn't look like they're properly compacting that back in under the road itself. I don't want sections of Washington cracking off in two, three years because of poor backfill. Most of that should be premium fill anyway, rather than just putting clay back in, because it affects the road structure itself. But at the same time, what is the schedule for next Monday in the way of Dominion? Are there still going to be plates on the road, or are they going to try to at least get portions of Broadway resurfaced? Because we've got bands, kids, and everything marching down that street, somebody's going to trip on one of those plates, or trip in one of the holes, because some of those areas that they temporarily filled, and I'm hoping they're temporarily filled, are several inches deep again. So, we have a mess over there, and we have a parade that is going to go through that area. Do you have any idea?
The plates are planned to be removed, and they are going to have that paved. That's the plan.
Yeah, I've heard that for about six months, but...
That's their plan, was that's.
Yeah.
We are aware of it, and we're concentrating on Broadway as well, as far as our patchwork that we normally do.
Yeah.
Something we do at the start of every year.
Yeah, the City of Cleveland Water Department's been working on their 30-inch main. The other day, I thought it was kind of interesting, they were filling around with the one valve, and the water was shooting 20 feet in the air. So I don't know if one of their valves is bad on that main, or what they're planning on doing with that, too. So I know they've got, near Vendetti down there, they've got one of their valves dug up, too, so I would hope that they're coordinating the work over there on Broadway. You know, this is our chance where we have a lot of people come into town, and they're going to see a one heck of a mess from Union all the way down. As was mentioned, the Rick Bernoff's coming up here right after Memorial Day. The following week, of course, is the big festival for the Historical Society, which is the Strawberry Festival, from the 8th through the 10th. I'm sure we can use more volunteers if people are willing to do it, strawberry tents especially. Beer trailer, I think we're semi-covered, we still could use a few volunteers there, because I want time off. But anybody that you know that might be interested, our strawberry tent personnel is over here in the audience, make sure you see her before you leave, or have them contact one of us, we'll make sure that we can put your help to great use. Speaking of grass, Columbus Road from Logan down to Lincoln, there's at least a half a dozen houses there that are in very poor shape. The grass is getting high. There's a few on Northfield Road, too, so between the church, which is Solon Road basically, and Columbus, there's been a few of those that have been let go. I know some of them on Northfield are abandoned homes. In fact, I think a couple of them on Columbus are, too, so I would hope that we get to those. People tend to have visitors and stuff during the holidays, and we want this, at least the main streets looking fairly reasonable when people drive through the town, so that we don't get a poor image.
There was, if I could just mention one thing, there is one house on Northfield that looks like it's in pretty bad, bad shape near Avery.
Yes.
That is scheduled for demolition, it's owned by the Land Bank. The Land Bank has four other properties, I think they had, I think it was four. They mentioned that they actually, there was a hiccup as far as their contractor, they were very apologetic. Those grass, their properties will get addressed quickly. That home is scheduled for demolition, though.
All right, I lose another resident. No, there's nobody been in the house for years. And one last thing is, I want to thank the garden club for, if you haven't seen the garden that was revamped right out front here, or planted again. I remember when we first put that in, I dug most of those holes for most of the plants that are permanent in there when it first got in, so I know the effort that's put forth when that gets done. You guys have done an excellent job again, as usual, actually throughout the city, on all the gardens you maintain, so I want to give you a little bit of kudos for that. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, glad to see you all. So, first of all, I also wanted to thank the garden club for spending some time cleaning up the city hall gardens, both in the front and in the back. They, they worked very hard, and they look beautiful. I also wanted to let everyone know that the festival schedule and the party is in the park schedule is available on the city website, as well as Bedford Ward 5. If you can get down to the commons this summer and enjoy yourself, that'd be great. We are finalizing the new welcome packet, we'll be bringing back the welcome program here in Bedford. We have a group of citizens who've volunteered to help distribute that packet and let new residents know that we are glad to have them here in Bedford, so we're looking forward to being able to do that again. I wanted to let everyone know that the Bedford Downtown Alliance, which is our citizen committee for revitalizing the downtown area, is currently selling t-shirts in order to fundraise, so if you would like to purchase a t-shirt, it's $20, and they're available at both the Broadway Cyclory and Bedford Historical Society. And speaking of the Bedford Historical Society, we will be launching a new website in the coming week, so that we get a nice new, fresh look. We are currently seeking images from any events that have been happening at the Bedford Historical Society over the past several years. If you have those images and you're willing to share them, to be posted publicly on that website, you can send it to me at heather@bedfordward5, the number five, dot com. I also know that there was an extensive conversation today about parking on Washington on Facebook, if any of you are here for that. I wanted to let you know that it has been extended, we are going to discuss that in the next work session, so you still have time to contact your councilperson and let them know your thoughts on that particular matter. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizek?
Thank you, Anne, thank you all for taking my special dates to repeat what I'm going to do. But usually, I don't like a lot of things bothering me, but I have a pet peeve, and that one I have to make known, is people that buy cars, most cars come with right and left directions. But if you can't find them, think about it before you decide to make the wrong turn on the right lane. And that's where I'll leave it, because now we have another pet peeve. And I've talked to Mike about it, and it's people that are not understanding what we're trying to say. When we are given a designated day of the week to put our garbage out between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. the following morning, in each ward, we have designated days, Tuesday or Wednesday. It doesn't mean last Thursday or Saturday. There was a few today that I got a little bit annoyed with, but now I was told today, because if you see this, people that are not doing it on the right day or ahead of time, we are to call dispatch. It was not, I don't have to go through the proper protocol of contacting Michelle to get this situation resolved. So if anybody in the audience sees a violation, call dispatch when it happens, so they can be, their memory can be refreshed with a little note. And that's where I'm going to leave that. But most people are Tuesday or Wednesday, and we've kind of let the other people do it. Have the infraction, have to put their... seven AM the following morning, in each ward we have designated days, Tuesday or Wednesday. It doesn't mean last Thursday or Saturday. There was a few today that I got a little bit annoyed with, but now I was told today, because if you see this, people that are not doing it on the right day or ahead of time, we are to call dispatch. It was not, I don't have to go through the proper protocol of contacting Michelle to get this situation resolved. So, if anybody in the audience sees a violation, call dispatch when it happens so they can be, their memory can be refreshed with a little note. And that's where I'm gonna leave that. But most people are Tuesday or Wednesday and we've kinda let the other people do it. Have the infraction, have to put their garbage back in the yard till the right day. Next, I'm going to elaborate. We used to call it the Memorial Day Parade. Out of respect to the red, to our veterans and our members of the certain safety forces and that, it's a solemn ceremony. And after we form our, our cities together, because we've done this for years, and we go down to the square and then we have, we sit at the square and the other, and of course the crowd gathers. This is not a candy event, it's a solemn event to show respect to our country and for those that fought here, there was for us to have our freedoms. I'm inviting you all to be down there Monday morning where if you wanna be on the sides, on the side of the streets to wave at us, we will wave at you if we can, but there will be no candy that day. And join us at the square and then we go down to the cemetery where there's usually a very good speaker for the day to show appreciation for our country. And afterwards, like Beth's mentioned from the VFW, you're welcome to come in and break bread with us there. Because I always donate baked beans. When you eat here, it gets to be bigger and bigger. Well, this year we're up to twenty pounds, so if you're hungry, come on over. I appreciate it. Now, the kickoff, the ending of this Memorial Day ceremony will be the kickoff to our summer events. Well, everybody gave them just about June's schedule, but we're gonna be there for the whole summer, enjoy ourselves and have camaraderie and say, you know what, we're proud of Bedford because we're always open to everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. One, one reminder, call in for the trash, call in the two-three-two-one-two-three-four number, not the nine-one-one.
Can I give you a surprise about that nine-one-one? There's a lady on down the street, unfortunately she's crippled, not crippled, she eats an amputee. She lost both her legs when she was younger and she's home. And I know I mentioned the squirrels a couple of minutes ago, but this is a true story because every time I see one of, one or two of the regular dispatchers we've had, we laugh because she got, she called dispatch one night and she's by herself and she says, "You have to send the police down here. Squirrels are having sex on my roof." At that, the dispatcher did not know what to do. She did say, "Please cut out." And he says to her, he goes, "Well, how do you know?" She says, "Because she was squealing, he was making a lot of noise and they were thumping on my gutter and I don't like it." And then he left. And that's a true story. But I just wanna leave you with a smile. Thank you.
Mr. Saunders, it's hard to talk about that.
Yeah, I don't know what this is. Beans and all. I just, I'm looking forward to the Tickers Creek Watership Partners meeting, presentation on Wednesday. They, they do good work and although not, not a lot of people know what they do, but they're concerned with their natural capital. That's, that's very important in the city and we, we like our falls and we like the water and everything and this is a group that pays attention to that and storing water and pollution and whatnot, so I think should be an interesting presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of stuff got said already, but thanks again to the garden club and you guys who worked out there. I stopped by a couple of times just to encourage them that they're doing a good job. The shovel didn't fit my hand and so I couldn't... And also, and we all, we always appreciate all what you do with that and the bridge when that's, it's already been cleaned, I understand, and the flowers have been grown up and that's great. We had a shred day here on Saturday. Again, I went there and assisted for about ten minutes, but I did wanna thank our employees, Ani and Brittany and Steve and Tony and Debbie. Yeah, they were, they were out there for...
Filled the truck.
Filled it. They filled the trucks so, our people did so much with shred, the back doors were bulging on the truck. I wouldn't wanna follow it down the street, but they were, they actually were bulging. It was that much shred that was in there. We also had the grand opening for the Dollar General. They invited us down and the manager called me and said, "Yeah, could you help with our ribbon cutting?" I said, "Sure, no problem." He said, "When?" I said, "Seven-thirty." I said, "AM?" But we were there Saturday. It's a nice store and they got, it's not one of those, it's only a dollar store, so it's got a lot of stuff. If you need some aspirin, you need some milk, they got it. It'll be a good addition to the town there. Also, on Saturday, I got to perform a wedding down at the gazebo. That's, that's always fun. And it's kinda busy on Saturday. And I met a tour bus that came to Viaduct Park. I was at Destination Cleveland's annual meeting downtown and I think I mentioned a couple of meetings ago about the British guys that came into town and are now gonna add us to their tour when they come into Cleveland. And I was talking to the young lady that set us up and these two tour bus operators should come up to say hi to her and we got to talking and they said, "Oh, we're gonna be in Bedford on Saturday. How about, it'd be really cool if the mayor come and welcome the bus." So, since I was up at seven-thirty anyhow, went over nine-fifteen to the Viaduct Park and welcomed all the people from, theirs is called December, Ohio, and these people drive all over Ohio. They're all from Ohio and there was a big one Bedford person on the bus. And they visit sites in Ohio because Ohio first, right? And they, they all come here, they love coming here. Also, on Wednesday, I was at the mayor's meeting in Columbus where we meet with our state senators and state reps and some of the staff people from the governor's office. It's always very informative. But most of the politicians, it comes down to, Republicans all said, "We wanna cut taxes so we can give money back to everybody," but they don't know how to pay for programs that they pass. And then the Democrats said, "Yeah, we're with you. We wanna do anything you, you want," but they don't vote. But we did, some of the staff people gave us some good information, so that was well worth it on that day. And that evening was the banquet for the tech, technical and...
Career tech.
Career and technical for the high school. And they saluted, I think, seven kids that just doing some remarkable work. These are kids that are not going to college, they're going right into businesses and, you know, they're, they got their training through Bedford and in conjunction with a, they have a reciprocal program with Cleveland Heights, Florence Heights, Maple Heights, where they send students back and forth to do cosmetology, auto mechanics, marketing, all different kind of, but these kids, you know, I always like to brag, there's good kids up at this school. We don't always get to see them, but these are some of the cream of the crop that are not the college bound, because colleges are for everybody. And these kids are gonna make a difference in the careers that, you know, we need people can work on our cars and do stuff like that, so kudos to all those kids in that program. And that's enough rambling, let's go on with the business. Ordinance number ninety-six oh five dash eighteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Lebanon Ford to purchase one twenty eighteen Ford SUV utility interceptor and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Originally, we had planned to acquire three new cruisers this year, which we had done and made those purchases earlier in the year. However, we did have an officer involved in an accident with a two thousand and fifteen cruiser. That cruiser was totaled. So, in working through the insurance, we were able to recoup and we would be getting about sixteen thousand, just under seventeen thousand dollars from the insurance. Obviously, it was not our intention to acquire another vehicle, however, based on what we would get with insurance and utilizing the state bid, we are recommending replacing that cruiser, anticipating, listen, not knowing where we are going into next year, we could be, looking at our budget as we prepare for nineteen and there's a real chance of not replacing any vehicles next year. So, if we can get a new vehicle, that would be four new vehicles this year. One of them is being almost half-funded through the insurance. That's our intention with this. And again, it would still fall under the, the state purchasing guidelines. That would need to be done by June first, which is their deadline. That's been our previous deadline, not just based on this.
Right. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Ordnance number ninety-six oh six dash eighteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with North Coast Two Way Radio to purchase and install the equipment for that new police vehicle we just mentioned and declaring an emergency.
Can I have a motion for suspension by Mezak, second by Saunders? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Again, Mike?
This is simply to outfit the, the vehicle. We are actually looking at what we can save from the previous vehicle as far as outfitting it. This will actually, it would be a little bit more, but this is to outfit the new vehicle.
Gotta do that. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Ordnance number ninety-six oh seven dash eighteen.
Authorizing the city to certify to the county fiscal officer the costs associated with police response to four eighty Northfield Road as said property owners in violation of Bedford's false alarm ordinance and declaring an emergency.
For suspension by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Sping?
Or Rhodes? Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mezak, second by Saunders. Mike?
After, after multiple false alarms, it's our policy to start billing the business or organization for those responses. We've had a handful over the last year for the former Chanel property. We've sent multiple notifications regarding that, those billings, and we have not received payment nor correspondence. Typically, we do these later in the year, sometime around September, but knowing that this property is soon to transfer, we don't wanna go ahead with our assessments after it's been transferred and thus assess the new property owner. We'd like to do this now to make sure that it's in line when it goes through the title process, that the current owner is responsible for these costs. And that's why we're doing the assessment now.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Ordnance number ninety-six oh eight dash eighteen.
An ordinance allowing the city to levy assessments for the expense of garbage, refuse collection, recycling and disposal within the city of Bedford during the year twenty eighteen and declaring an emergency.
And we would like to put this on first reading. I have a motion for such by Rhodes, second by Mezak. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Resolution number ninety-five twenty-four dash eighteen.
Declaring the necessity to improve certain streets in the city of Bedford by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
And these, this one and the next two all concern street lighting, which we're gonna put on first reading tonight so we can take a look at the streets that are getting done. I have a motion for first reading by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Ordnance number ninety-six oh nine dash eighteen.
An ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of certain streets in the city of Bedford by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
Again, we want first reading. Do I have a motion for such by Saunders, second by Mezak? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety-six ten dash eighteen.
An ordinance allowing us to levy special assessments for the improvements of the street and public places of the city of Bedford by lighting of the same in accordance with the two prior resolution numbers and declaring an emergency.
And again, to put on first reading, motion for such by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Mayor?
Mayor, just to make your comments, we're going to do the assessments. These are annual assessments that we do every year. We have three, two ordinances and one resolution regarding the luck street lighting. What that is, is they're stating the actual streets and two of the, one ordinance, one resolution, and then one ordinance that actually stipulates the rate that will be charged out of the assessment.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider.
Yes, so we're gonna reconsider council's denial of April second, twenty eighteen, per the Board of Zoning Fields' recommendation of March twenty-seven, twenty eighteen regarding Byron Green at six sixty Columbus Road to build a pole barn garage under certain conditions negotiated between the parties as regards to heights and inspections and permits and the use of an attic, which we will have signed. So, if you vote to reconsider would be, a yes vote would be to reconsider and approve that, that recommendation because the Board of Zoning Fields did approve it.
Thank you. Some, some information has come to light, that's why we're revisiting this one and worked out some details with the owner, which will be recorded on the property deed. So, as far as the restrictions on the garage, so it will continue with whoever else would purchase the house at such time as it comes for sale, if it comes for sale. Can I have a motion, we have a motion? I don't know if I need a motion by Janutus, second by Fluharty? Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
No.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Before we get to the hearing, there's one thing I did forget. I just wanna give congratulations to the First Baptist Church of Bedford over on Turney Road. They just celebrated their fiftieth anniversary in that building over there on Turney. They started out, well, next door to the big church on the square from eighteen ninety-two?
That's when they built the brick one.
The brick one, yeah. Before that, they had a wooden structure back to, the structure back to the eighteen thirties, I believe. So, they've been in town a long, long time, but fifty years this location on Turney Road. I wanna congratulate them on doing that. And now we have the hearing of citizens. If you would like to speak, come forward, state your name, address, any comment. Rich Novak, twelve fifty-two Broadway. All I wanna say is the Strawberry Festival's coming up. Saturday's the car show. I need a few more volunteers to help me on Saturday. We do shut the road down from three o'clock to about ten o'clock in the evening. Between roughly three and four-thirty, five o'clock, we get a gazillion cars coming in. So, I need a few people to help me park cars, so if anybody's out there doesn't have anything to do, come on, give me a hand. Thank you. Thank you. That's always a fun thing. Anyone else? I wanna get home for the cabs. Last five minutes, that's all you gotta watch.
Governor McDaniel, one eight six Center Road. I could've waited till after the meeting, but there's a nasty chuck hole on Nordham and where Nordham and...
Dennis?
Irwin come together on the Columbus.
Okay, yeah.
And I knew it was there, but I hit it again yesterday and it jars you. Can we get it filled?